All right, is everyone in that you? All right, so the time is 6 o'clock and we're starting our public hearing. Welcome, everyone. This is our public hearing today, which means this is just an informational meeting. There's no votes taking place today. This is for the selectmen to present some ordinances and appropriation that we have up on the table right now. It's to get residents, answer residents' questions and get some feedback. So first, I'm Tracy Hansen, I'm for the first selectmen. And we have Ron Milovich in the middle and
Skip Holden.
And we're the board of selectmen. The way that the public hearing is going to work today, first of all, it's being recorded. It's being livestreamed on YouTube right now as well. We're asking for people to be respectful in conversation with questions. If you, when the time comes for question and answer, if you have a question or a comment, there is a raised hand under, under the reactions, right? On your toolbar for the Zoom meeting. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand with star nine. There's also a chat feature on your toolbar. You can also ask the question in chat if you don't want to, if you don't want to ask it in person.
And the chat only goes to the host. There is no ability to chat between each other. So only Julie will see any questions coming in via the chat.
All right, and so we're going to start off first by going through everything on the, I think the ordinances and the proposals. We're going to go through them all first and then we'll open up to questions for, for everything. So we're going to start with the town clerk ordinance.
Sure. So this board of selectmen has looked at the position of town clerk similar to the way previous boards have looked at the position of tax collector. Tax collector was formerly an elected position and it was, by town statute, was moved to an appointed position. And the reason that was done was because of the certification and training requirement necessary to be the tax collector. Well, the town clerk, over the years, responsibilities have grown and the certification requirements have grown. The town clerk's current elected term is two years. If someone knew was to come into the position via election, for which we have no way of vetting whether or not they have any of the certifications required, the certification process can take over a year. So more than half of their term would be spent on training and education at the town's expense in order to get them certified to do their job. The town clerk has a very strong legal and fiduciary responsibility to the town. So that's, both of those mean liability to the town. If the town clerk is not doing their job as an elected position, there is no recourse that the board or any part of the town has to deal with someone not doing their job. Either they are not doing the reporting that's required to the state, or they are not doing all of the filings. Elections, elections have changed. Due to COVID, absentee ballots have increased significantly and that falls not on the registrars, but on the town clerk. With this increase in responsibility for the town clerk for elections, one of the other concerns is an elected, as an elected position, they are elected as a member of a specific political party, either Republican or Democrat. So another concern for the town clerk is to ensure that they are, that they are not brought into the position through partisan means, meaning either Republican or Democrat. Part of the appointment process is, we don't look at what political party they are part of, we look at their qualifications to do the job. If the town clerk is not doing their job, as I stated, as an elected official, there is no recourse. The town of Franklin has had problems with elected positions, with people deciding that they weren't going to show up, but what, two days a week, a couple of hours? And the town clerk is a full-time position. And there is no recourse until the end of that term to replace them. Certifications I discussed. Oh, the last time that this came up for a vote was in 2018. At that time, the resolution to move from an elected official to an appointed official lost by two votes. The vote was 32 for appointed, 34 for staying elected. So it was only a two-vote difference that decided this just over two years ago. Looking around the state, the data that's available is there was a report from 2006 and a report from 2015. There's a new report that will be done later this year. But the 2006 report shows that out of 169 towns in the state of Connecticut, 36 town clerks were appointed. And again, that's in 2006. By 2015, that 36 number had increased to 48 towns, had moved that town clerk from an elected to an appointed position. When the survey is done later this year, I suspect that number is going to go up again. And just to put that in context, 48 out of 169, that's just a little bit over 28% of the towns in the state have an appointed town clerk. So this board's reasons for bringing forward this motion about making the town clerk an appointed position is based on what we think is the right thing to do for the town. It is no, there is no reason to think that this is, we're trying to do away with something that has always been elected. We're doing this because we consider it in the best interest of the town.
And I just wanted to add a couple of things to that, thank you.
Please, Tracy.
It currently takes four and a half years for a town clerk to get certified and the elected position is for two years. So as Skip said, financially for the town, it's, it's, it's worth it to invest in a person that will be there longer than two, two years. Another thing, one of the, after, after this was brought up last time, there were many people that came forward that said that it was voted against because they were worried that it gave a lot of power to the board of selectmen, that it would, it would, that the town clerk would change still with the, with the change of the board. But this, so with this ordinance, we made it clear that this position was treated more like a hired position. And the only way that once someone was appointed, and it does carry on with the current town clerk, by the way, but once the person is appointed, the only way they can be removed is if by just cause, which means that they're not doing their job. So this does not, like how it is now, this, not without, this just means that it's not at the whim of the board every time the board changes.
And this allows us to interview candidates and ensure that they have the requisite experience and certification.
And this would be treated the same way we have with the town clerk, the assistant assessor, all of the positions we have in the town hall. We, even the appointed ones, we treat as a hired position. We do interviews, we do applications, we do contracts. And we do, when we're doing the interview process, we do point scales and we do point scales with extra points towards Volantown residents. So Volantown residents are always a priority in our hiring right now, too.
One last one, I just remembered, I had heard some discussion about maintaining the position as an elected position and if there were not any qualified candidates within the town of Volantown, extending the election outside of Volantown, and that is not allowable. An election holds that position to someone who is a resident of Volantown in order to be eligible to run for the position. So that was not an option.
All right, so that's, I think that's
No, no.
So that's our reasoning. And the reason why we're doing the town clerk ordinance now at this time and not at the town, annual town meeting in May or June, by state statutes, because this is an election year in November, by state statutes, the town clerk has to report to the Secretary of State's office by May 5th, what offices are going to be on the ballot. So if we decide to remove the town clerk from the ballot, we have to have that information turned in by May 6th in order for it to be in effect for, for November. So take, hope you wrote down your questions for that and we're going to move on to the explanation of the
No wake
The no wake, the beach pond no wake ordinance. So the beach pond no wake ordinance is also a timely ordinance. It, it has to, backstory, there has been issues with beach ponds and the speed of watercraft for a while and it escalated, I would say, this year with more people out on the pond. DEP and NCON, which is NCON's, the environmental, environmental conservation police. I spent a lot of time with them this summer out on beach ponds and have been finding it very frustrating that the town, because beach pond is a public water that's managed and enforced by the state of Rhode Island, on a huge chunk of it, and the state of Connecticut on another piece of it, I mean, Connecticut's the huge chunk, Rhode Island's the smaller piece. It's really hard to, for the town itself to have any control over what's going on on the pond. So I had said to DEP, what can we do as a town to help with, with the problems of the watercraft speeds, the safety issues that people were reporting of getting knocked over on their kayaks and getting knocked over on their paddleboards and worried about swimming. And they said to me, we can put together an ordinance that designates the cove area, I don't know if, can you put the map up or? We'll have, we have a map to show the exact area that the ordinance covers. But DEP said, we can put together an ordinance that for the town to vote on that will designate, and the map's upside down because the ordinance describes the area from actually being at the boat launch and it's to the right, it's like straight across and to the right. So if you can see on the map, it's the cove area that we're talking about. They suggested doing an ordinance that designates the cove area from the right of the boat launch all the way down as a slow no wake zone. And this means that motor craft can't go faster than six miles an hour. And that designates an area, a safety zone area for kayaks, swimming and no, it was seen as a, as something to bring up, as a, as a way to, and also DEP and NCON said that also makes it easier to control, not control, but manage the speed in the other areas if there is a designated area to. So I, this is where this came from. I did have a, have a resident or a property owner call me. So back to beach pond. I did have a resident or a property owner contact me with questions about water skiing and had asked if this no wake zone affected that. And I contacted DEP and they said that according to the, according to the way that it's currently written and according to the purpose of the ordinance, which was to, which was to designate a safe, a safe no motor craft area and they said, according to the way that it was written, that this does not give, to make it so that people can launch and bring back water skis from their property. They said there is an option, we could add that to the ordinance, but they don't know, because this ordinance has to be approved by DEP before, even if, even if we approve it, they still have to approve it, too. So they said the chance of it being approved with that piece added to it was pretty slim because that defeated the whole purpose of it anyway. And they said that would be really hard to enforce because how would they know who was a resident on a waterski and who wasn't? And that if people that were non-residents or residents in that area on waterskis, then they would just think it was okay to do. So it wouldn't, it would make it harder to enforce. So like, like I said at the beginning, this is just being proposed as a possible solution to one of the issues on beach pond. And that's the beach pond ordinance. I don't know if you guys have anything to add. And then the last part, that's on the agenda for today, is the appropriation from the undesignated fund for the completion of the public works garage. This is mostly a paperwork approval of the money. We went a little bit over budget with the garage and this was due to, to combination of two things, that we, we had, we had contingent money in our estimate, in our budget, but these two brought us over. And one of them was unsuitable still. When we were digging the foundation for the garage, it was discovered that there were boulders and, and roots, tree roots buried back there, who knows when, but they had to be removed. And that took us a bit over. And the second was when we went to dig the well for the water, we couldn't find, we didn't hit any water. So we ended up having to do fracking for the water and that brought us over, too. So those are the reasons why we went over budget on that. We did cut wherever we could to, to lessen the increase, but due to the lawsuit that had been settled that we were working from to do the garage, there was only so much that we could do in the, in the cutting without affecting the, that part of the lawsuit. And those are all our
And Tracy, on the garage there, just to make sure that we're putting the word out, was we did get all the grants that we had applied for. What was the total of all the grants that we had applied for for the garage? Do you remember? Rossley?
Have to be over $700,000.
Yeah.
By the time we got to one, you did the parking lot, you had one full wall, cleaned it all up there, you probably pushed $800,000. Was paid by the state.
So that was not part of the town budget.
Right.
That was money from the state, the town garage.
All right, so do you guys have anything else to add? We can open it up to questions?
No, we'll open it up. No, let's, let's see how questioning works. We've got our fingers crossed.
All right, we can start with David, if you want to unmute him. All right, David, you're unmuted.
All right, first off, I have a couple comments to make about this evening. I only see 23 participants in the Zoom meeting. I don't understand why we couldn't have this in the school gym. That's A. Number two is, we had a huge election in November 3rd, correct?
Yep.
Everybody did a fantastic job. The registrar voters did a phenomenal job. Everybody came out, everybody voted, and now you want to do a drive-through ballot, if I'm not mistaken?
Yep.
I'm not a big fan of it at all.
We're not either. And we're not a fan of doing the Zoom meetings either. We're working with what we have to work with from the restrictions to the executive orders of the governor.
Oh, I get it. I work for the state and I know the executive orders that come down, but as long as you keep six foot, the gym should have plenty of room for everybody. Just my opinion.
Yeah. And that's what we think, too, but the problem with that is, it depends on how many people show up. There's, there's more than one, but one of them is, it depends on how, we don't have a gauge as to how many people are going to show up.
And what was the limit for?
I don't even, I don't even remember.
I think it was 50?
It was 50, so you couldn't have more than 50.
Right, so as soon as the 51st person showed up, we would say, we cannot hold a meeting here because we can't turn someone away from a public hearing.
So that's the problem. You can't, you can't tell people they can't come. And if you reach the maximum, you have to cancel the meeting. So it's like, it's like a gambling on how the meeting is going to go. And the thing with the
Okay, fair enough.
The thing with the election, that the way, because it was a presidential, presidential election, there were special exemptions for that specific election that are no longer in place right now. And it's very frustrating because the state has made it hard for towns to have meetings and votes. And, and that was a special exemption for the presidential election. Trust me, it's, I'm doing whatever I can to have people vote because one of the things they've done is they put an executive order in that gives the board of selectmen the right to vote on things without it going to vote. And that is something that we're, we're all against. And trust me, it would be a heck of a lot easier, but that's not how things work.
That's not how a board of selectmen, form of government is set up. It is input from the town.
Yeah.
So we fully agree with that.
Yeah, we strongly believe in the input and in the, and in the voice of the residents. So we are doing what we can. If it's something as crazy as doing a drive-through vote, it's what we have to do to get, to get, to get you guys' opinion. So we're trying to do what we can and
Okay, now
That's how it's working, so.
All right, I'd like to give my opinion on the town clerk's position. Back in 2018, I actually came before the selectmen's office, the board, and I voiced my opinion then, Tracy. My opinion still has not changed. I want to see people vote on who's elected. I don't want to see appointed for the simple fact that whoever is in power, selectmen, the three of you, if you hire somebody, they are going to be beholden to you. I don't care what you say, the fact is that you will be their boss. The fact that you're their boss, they will always side with you. Whereas right now, currently, the town clerk is beholden to the state and the citizens of Volantown. She has to abide by state statute. If she does not abide by state statute, she gets in trouble and the town gets in trouble and they get fined, correct?
They do get fined for certain things, yes.
Correct. Now, you, the board of selectmen also recently had an issue with a town employee and had a hard time getting rid of them, correct?
I don't think so.
Within the last two years, the road foreman?
Oh, that was four plus years ago.
Okay, four plus years ago. You had a very hard time getting rid of an employee.
Yeah. That was before me.
That was, that was under Bob.
Yeah.
Bob, the decision was made.
It's still, no matter who's in office, it's still the selectmen trying to get rid of an employee. They had a very difficult time. Now, if you propose making her basically an employee of the town, whoever the person is, for town clerk, male, female, whatever, it's hard to get rid of them versus electing them out. You can vote them out of office. Now, like I said last time this came up, Tracy, if I don't like what you do, I can run against you and bump you out of office. Same with Ronnie and everybody else. And if whoever doesn't like what I'm doing on planning and zoning or any board that I've been on, they can also run against me. It's the checks and balances that we've had in this state and in this country, and I don't think we should give it up.
Thank you.
But that's my opinion and I'll, I'll yield to whoever else wants to make any other opinions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yep.
Your opinion, not for yielding.
Mike Trask, your hand's up. You'll be unmuted.
Hi, we're at Eight Lakeside Terrace. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. So we don't understand, we're definitely down that volume of area where you're saying that there's speed problems and we, we have not seen many incidents down here. What we see on the lake, and I am talking about the lake issue, not the, not the clerk problem, we've seen an increase of volume. The Rhode Island launch has added that to the lake and we've had zero enforcement. The DEP suggesting to shut down another portion of this lake that we've been on this lake for 45 years. We have not seen many incidents down this area. There's a six mile an hour zone that is already there that needs to be enforced and is never enforced. We see jet skis coming out at high velocity. We see all the things that you're talking about, the, the lack of respect for the, the people that live on the lake. This is all being created by a larger volume of boats being allowed in the lake. And this was created when we added a launch that added at minimum another 15 to 20 boats that could be on the lake, never mind the 15 to 20 jet skis that could be added to the lake from that area that's not being enforced. I don't, I don't see reducing the speed from the boat launch to the point as anything that's going to help the issue of volume and enforcement on this lake that needs to be addressed. And I will yield at that point.
Thank you. Angela?
Real quick, before we go to Angela, Julie, do we have anyone who is dialed in or is everyone in Zoom right now? Okay, no, I just wanted to, so we don't need to put out instructions for what they need to do. Sorry, Angela, please.
Do you have the screen on big?
Okay, I'm in. So we also live in the proposed no wake zone and just like Mr. Trask, we're a little concerned that this is just bringing on more rules that aren't going to be enforced. So yes, there are speed issues where we are, but we also ski from our property as our family's been doing for 60 years in this part of the lake, as the Trasks have as well. So we're a little concerned that this is just punishing the residents of the lake. No wake zone ordinance, we don't understand how that's ever going to be enforced when all the other rules aren't enforced. So it seems like a little bit of a, a waste of everybody's time. That's all I have.
Thanks, Angela.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Bob? Yeah.
There we are, right?
You're good.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to go on a little bit of what David had said, too. I know you had said in there that basically as far as qualified people go, you know, it's easier for you as appointed position to be able to check the qualifications of people. I don't understand why you couldn't check the qualifications of people that would be elected anyway. I think that's, you know, that the board should be doing that anyway. Anybody that runs for office, you should be looking into the person and seeing who has the most qualifications, who is, who's going to be doing the best job for the town. The Volantown election, you say The Volantown election, you said cannot be, it has to be a resident of Volantown? Is that correct?
Yes.
There's no way that you can have that stipulated in there, that if there's nobody in Volantown that is qualified enough, that you could open it up to outside residents?
Not as an election.
Really?
In order to be on the ballot in Volantown, you have to be a resident of Volantown, and you have to be an elector of Volantown, so you have to be registered to vote.
That's interesting. All right, the other question I had is on the 23,000 that you're asking for for the, for the building. Do you have any invoices on those?
We have, we do have change orders. They're, they're public information, so if you wanted to request them, you could.
You do, okay. I mean, is there a way to get them on a website so that the town, you know, the voters can see this stuff?
There's a lot of them. We have a lot of change orders for this. Like I said, you can come by and request them, and we can give you, give you a copy of them.
Well, I just wanted, because I'm more about, I'm more about transparency, and I mean, it's all well and good that I can go and get them, but I believe that if we had a spot set up somewhere on the town website, that things like this could be posted that the voters could actually look at and, and go, all right.
I fully agree, because the only problem is, it takes, someone's going to have to scan them, put them on there. It's, it's something that I don't think we have the staff to do at this time. It can be someone, it can, it can be a task that someone works on when they're not working on the other things, but there's a lot of things that we don't have the staff for, and that's why we have them on file here. If you wanted a copy, we could provide it and possibly find it and scan it to you. But to have someone scan all of the papers and, and put them online is, is a time-consuming.
Could I request that thing? Can you take them, scan them to me? And I can always post them out on the Volantown, Volantown site for people to see?
Yep, you can put them in writing and request them, yeah. Send it to Julie.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Or to me, I think you have my email address.
Yes, I probably still have it, yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Mr. Miller? Wait, wait, Julie, I'll unmute you. To Miller.
Yes, and it's you, Miller.
Okay, the $23,000 overage, where are you taking that money from? Do you have it in the budget, or is that coming from other accounts?
It would come from the Undesignated Fund, which at right now, we're at, what, 1.6? For what, the Undesignated Fund? 1.4, 1, 1.4?
And what is that, what is that percentage-wise? Because that was always what we did by statute.
Is it 15? Yeah, so we have 1, 1.4 currently in the Undesignated Fund, which is at 15.
1.4 what?
Million.
Okay.
Which puts us at 15%, and we have a policy where we aim to be at 8 to 12%. So.
Right. And now, the, the town clerk ordinance, the current town clerk is elected. If this ordinance would, would come about, that they would be hired by the Board of Selectmen, would the current town clerk continue as a hired person?
Yes. The ordinance is written that it would carry on for the one that's currently elected, like the one that's there now.
And then, not being a boater, this no-wake zone, if I understood, the other residents of the lake, currently, there is a ordinance for the six miles an hour?
There, there currently is not an ordinance for six miles an hour. There is currently an ordinance for 70, there, there's currently an ordinance for 75 feet. This is a whole pond ordinance. There's currently an ordinance for 75 feet from the shore or your raft or your whatever is a no-wake zone.
How, how wide is the cove?
And this is, the other thing is that the, that's, that's the town ordinance for the whole pond, but the boating regulations have 200 feet from the shore is the no-wake zone. And there's section, most of that cove is probably 400, 500 feet across or less. And this is another thing that DEP said as well, is that there's, if you followed that, the boating regulation of 200 feet from the shore, there's a section of that cove where there's probably like 50 to 25 feet where they had, where is the only, where is the only place they can go fast anyway. But the, the difference is, that boating regulation with the two feet from the shore has in it, except for launching or returning with water skis. That's the difference. This ordinance would not include water skis at all. So that's a difference. And that's, that's what I wanted to clarify with people too.
Then who, who would be responsible for posting and how would you make that known to watercraft?
Right, and this is where we would work with DEP. They would be, they are the enforcers, and they would help with the posting as to, because all of the, all of the posting for it, if it's posted in the water, has to be approved by them anyway.
Right.
So that would go through them as well.
Okay, I yield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think Mike's already asked a question, so we'll go to Jeff, don't be, and then we'll go back to you, Mike. Keep your hand still up. So we'll go to Jeff first.
Hi, how are you guys?
Hi, Jeff.
I just wanted to echo Angela and Mr. Trask. You know, it's more of a punishment for residents on the lake. I know me and you have had many conversations about enforcement and, and why it's not being done and how we can get it. And I think we made a little bit of an improvement last year. But to put an ordinance and hurt, you know, somebody like any of the other residents, that, that doesn't make any sense. We really need to get more enforcement out there and figure out a way to get that done. You're welcome. Bye.
Bye. Mike, you have another question? Mike Trask?
Yeah, so are you unfamiliar, or is, am I unfamiliar, that there is a six mile an hour zone? It is at the point of our property, where you, at the end of our wall?
I know, and this is where we don't really know where that six mile came from, because there isn't an ordinance for it. So we don't really know if, I'm saying keep it there, but I don't know where, where it came from.
We've, we've lived on the lake for 45 years now.
Right.
That six mile an hour sign has been up and enforced by the neighbors around the lake.
And even DEP puts it back up, so we're, we're keeping it there.
And it was, it's an appropriate location as a reflection to the dam.
Yep.
Reflection to the dam, and it, and I apologize for my negligence. I thought the rule was 100 feet. Can I get law? But I'll, I'm trying to research that right now.
Yes, I have it written down somewhere.
Is that with a skier on when you say 200 feet?
Yep, here's what it says. It says, this is the state boating regulations. There's, I'll read both of them. No person shall operate a motorboat excluding a personal wa, oh, so one excludes the personal watercraft and one is for the personal watercraft.
You read personal watercraft at 200 feet, that's correct.
100 is the one with the personal watercraft, and 100 excludes those watercraft. That's the difference.
Right, so, so a boat is 100, a personal watercraft is 200, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And that makes sense. We're, we're seeing a high volume. Again, I don't mean to, you know, recapitalize on this, but we are seeing such a high volume. We have a jet ski. We won't even go out on it some days. We have to just say, put it away. Fearful for my own kids being out there. My kids, you know, I have to enforce my own kids, of course, because kids are kids. And you put them out in a lake, any lake, any body of water, and you tighten up the motion out there. There's, you know, if you look at the acreage on this lake, at 400 acres or whatever, the, and you, you distance out watercrafts by 200 feet at jet skis, you may get, in the safe boating areas, you may get 20 jet skis out there, and we're running 40. You know, I'm, I'm not sure if those numbers are exact, but it just, the safe areas to ride a jet ski, there's, there's not enough areas to ride a jet ski. I think, I think we're, again, punishing the owners that have been profiting, always here for a number of years, that have been safe boaters. I, again, I'd love to see the statistics on the incidents that are related to homeowners on this lake and see if we should be punishing the homeowners in the lake as opposed to limiting the incoming traffic on the lake.
Thank you. I have a hand raised. The name, the name says Kate Simpson. Yeah. I have a hand.
I think she's Kate Simpson.
It's right there. Second one down on the first column.
Oh, oh.
I don't know if she has a question or not, I can't hear. Can you see? He's right behind me. Can I see it? The second one down? Yeah, I got it from here. Oh, you know how to unmute? Or type in chat?
No, the hand wasn't up. That was Julie's mouse.
Oh, that was Julie's mouse.
When you moved your mouse over, because it was a white hand, that's why I was like, it looks different.
All right, never mind.
So we're, we're back to Bob then.
Mr. Bob, here you go back. Zoom meetings are fun.
Yeah, I just have a quick question on the undesignated surplus that you talked about. You have 1.4 million, you said, you have to keep at least 8 to 12%. You have 15 in there now.
Yep.
Does that include the money that you've taken out, which is like $200,000 to redo the roof library?
I didn't hear what you said.
Didn't you take like $200,000 out of the undesignated surplus for the roof library? I mean, a library roof, I'm sorry.
I don't think so.
We didn't give the library.
We haven't done the library roof.
No, that's on the capital improvement plan.
Yeah, that's in the capital improvement plan. That's something separate.
Okay.
I told you which list.
That's our, that's our, the capital improvement plan is our list of projects that are coming up that we, every budget year, we put money towards. So that's completely different.
I had thought at the time, it said something about the Undesignated Fund, that's why I had questioned you when, in that email that I sent to you, I believe, I had questioned you about that. But I was just wondering, because I was wondering how close it would put us to the 12 or 8 to 12%.
Yeah.
Tracy, I don't think we have the microphone on. The speakers, the speakers not working.
Yeah, that's just your laptop. I know, but what we're hearing is just what's coming from your laptop. We're not hearing the ceiling speakers.
Ah. Does everyone be able to hear everyone?
No. We could, they could hear us, yeah.
I don't have the microphone?
Yeah.
Is it on, is it on?
Yeah. All right, are there any other questions? Or comments or suggestions? God, what? What? There's nothing in chat, nothing in chat?
Okay.
Okay.
And it looks like people's going to drop.
All right, thank you.
Hold on, two more hands just went up. Jeff and Mike.
All right. Let's go back to Jeff.
All right, is there a way that we can possibly get together as the Board of Selectmen, the DEP, whoever's going to be patrolling the lake, you know, sometime in the spring, get all the residents together and have a meeting and figure something out?
Yep, sounds good.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike and Robert Sampson. All right, let's go to Robert Sampson.
Hi, thank, thank you for holding this. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, great. Listen, I, I, both, I and I both endorse exactly what's been said by the homeowners on the lake. And I'm probably saying something that's not the obvious, but the problem is not the homeowners on the lake with their skis. It's the people with jet skis who are racing, causing safety issues, and it's an enforcement issue. And I know I'm, I'm being a bit redundant with what's been said, but I think that has to be carried to the DEP, because we could put any ordinance you want in there. If indeed there's a six mile limit, they're violating that, these people. Even if they had, look at the PWC ordinance for 200 feet, they're violating that. It, it occurs to me that what's been said already is absolutely correct. This becomes now an enforcement issue where we can put anything we want, unless we get enforcement to, to back up what's going on. We're not going to end up with any sort of a benefit from this. And these people that are using these PWCs to race back and forth, it's safety, they're eroding the shore, banging boats into docks, et cetera. So I just wanted to add, add my voice to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, it's, it's the volume on your computer. You know, below, speaking on the bottom corner. Bottom right-hand corner. Turn up your volume. There you go. Bottom right-hand corner, under, under that bar in the bottom. The computer one.
Yeah.
You have a little speaker thing?
Next to the, in the system tray, next to the clock?
No.
Yeah, you can still watch.
Sorry.
You have a couple of people.
So over here, not back there.
No, no, that's, it's the actual speaker on the computer.
Yep, that's.
All right, let's see. Jeff, did you have another question?
Yeah, that's not it. We'll, we'll play around with this in the test.
You can, you can unmute Jeff if he has another question.
We're able to hear people when they speak to us, it's just not ideal, but.
Sorry, I lowered it. My bad.
Okay. All right, Mike, did you have another question, or is your hand just still up?
Mike, so I'm sorry, I'm sorry to talk so much. By the way, thank you very much for putting this on. As so many other people have said, you guys are doing a great job. We do appreciate it. We do appreciate what you did last year. We thought you guys took action the best you could. Obviously, there's a lot of things going against you, Rhode Island and Connecticut not quite working together. We're all willing to be patient. I, I do believe that the six mile an hour zone that is currently assumed to be in place, that I've assumed all my life has been in place, should be re-investigated. That should be in place. I mean, that's, that one makes sense. You're supposed to have a six mile an hour zone near a dam so that you don't create erosion prematurely on the dam that the town has spent so much money on. I just wanted maybe mention that we should, if that six mile an hour zone is not in place, I think you may want to look back into that six mile an hour zone from the point at where it's been for all my life and my fam, my family's life. So I just suggest that we take a look at that as opposed to taking up more acreage on the lake that we've appropriately handled for many, many years responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a point of one thing that you said. The dam is actually owned by the state of Connecticut, not by the town. Robert, did you have another question?
Actually, more of a comment. I thought about, I recognize there's a state boating law that, that should be enforced. As I indicated before, it sounds like it's an enforcement issue. However, if we replicated that ordinance, the, the state boating, just to, and it's probably redundant, but go back to them and say, listen, we're going to put an ordinance in place that replicates exactly what you have. Now we want you to enforce yours and ours, just to reinforce it, because they're just not doing anything right now. And I think they need to have a little bit of an impetus from the town to have something on our end that says, here's our ordinance, it, it mirrors what you should have been doing already, and we expect you to enforce yours as well as ours. And that was my only comment. And that was my only comment.
Thank you. All right, did anyone have any other questions or comments or anything? Give it a couple minutes. All right, if no one has anything else, did you guys have anything?
No, thank you all for attending.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. Oh, wait, where's Amali?
Molly Bennett.
Hi there, there's just someone else in the chat waiting to enter this call, so if you could just let him in and I know he wanted to speak.
Chris Bennett? I don't have Chris Bennett. Um.
I think you just have to accept him so that he can enter the meeting.
I don't have a Chris Bennett. We don't have anyone waiting to come in, we don't see it.
Okay, um, I'll let him know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give it another couple minutes.
Okay, thank you, and again, it's. They're.
All right.
Trying to echo what everyone else has already said, so just maybe to put it on record, but thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Um, did you see anyone else waiting to come in?
No, we should see them on the participant list there on the right-hand side, they should be waiting.
Okay.
Should be pending there.
Thank you for bearing with us for this, this is our first big Zoom meeting. It's been a. David, did you have anything else?
Yeah, while we're waiting for somebody else to possibly, um, make a comment or two, uh, as far as the boating goes on Beach Pond, um, I work for DEEP, I'm not a representative, nor do I claim to be tonight, however, I will tell you that there is only three N-Con officers who take care of everything east of the Connecticut River as far as boating goes. Therein lies the biggest problem with law enforcement. Um, EEM in Rhode Island and DEP, um, the best way to fix this is to call and complain, because when Hartford gets complaints, they actually will do something about it and put an officer out here. Um, they won't listen to the selectmen or the towns, it's the public. Um, the public has the power with the DEEP, just to let everybody know.
David, great point, thank you for bringing that up for everyone. David, can you give a phone number where we can direct them?
Uh, no, there's not a good phone number for that, um, although old line, DEEP is the headquarters for the boating department. Um, if I remember correctly, Mike Peyton is in charge of all the boat launches, so you could find him, talk to him, and irritate him.
Not just DEEP, but I think there should also be residents making phone calls to other summers.
Yes.
And, um, blanking, Forty-Fifth District, Brian.
Brian LeDoux.
Brian LeDoux.
And they were both very active this summer as well, too.
So, DEEP plus our next level up, elected reps.
Yes.
Our state senator and our district, uh, Forty-Fifth District rep.
All right, so, does anyone else have any questions or comments? I had a phone just come in, so I don't know if they know how to raise their hands, is that like? Um, if you're on the phone, we did have someone on the phone just come in, uh, you can raise your hand with, um.
Star nine.
Star.
Was it pound nine?
It was star six. The phone number.
It was, it was a nine. It was definitely a nine, it was either star, try star nine and try pound nine. Actually, let's just unmute them, see if they have a comment since they just joined.
Yep, their hand's up.
Yep, there we go. It was one of those two. We'll figure it out until we, we get there, right?
Hi, good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Chris Bennett, I live on the lake, uh, North Shore Drive, I would like to echo what the Trask said, that I would not want that restriction to be put on the lake.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Appreciate the time.
Thank you. All right, so it's five with seven, if we don't have any other questions, then we will call it a night, and thank you so much for everyone for participating with us tonight.
Thank you all, yes. Yeah.
And there, there will be a recording, this will be on the YouTube page, the town, um, a Volantown YouTube page, so it can be watched there, and you can tell people that they can, uh, watch it there as well, so, thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
I'll need to stop it and do a separate meeting for those questions.
Yep. Residents are for a bunch.